What's that? Yeah, I have this one. I'd like to ask people to rem-- oh, sorry. I'd like to ask people to remain standing for a moment of silence. For longtime resident and somebody that did a lot of volunteer work for the town, Martha McNeil.
Thank you.
Okay. Seven oh three, I'd like to open public forum. Seeing no one at the microphone, I would like to close public forum. This moment, at this time, I'd accept a motion to approve the minutes of the October seventeenth Town Council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the October seventeenth Town Council meeting.
Second.
Okay. There was one correction made of a minor nature, and is there anything else to be noted from the minutes at this time? If not, please call the roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Bowden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay. Are there any committee reports? Oh, sorry. Thank you. Town administrators' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we get into the written report, I want to take this opportunity to commend all the poll workers and staff yesterday for the election. As everybody's aware, we had a record turnout for midterm election. In the morning, there was some traffic issues just because of the new location and trying to get people in and out. That was solved quickly and flowed great for the rest of the day. The State's Attorney General's office had an observer here, and when I talked to the individual, he said that we were doing a great job and was very impressed with the traffic. He actually came back to make sure and see how that was working. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to commend Terry and her staff, as well as all the volunteers that day. On my written report, the first item is that the state of New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration has set the property tax rate for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, for the town of Newmarket. The tax rate is now twenty-nine, twenty-four, an increase of two dollars and fifty-one cents per thousand of assessed valuation, or nine point three percent. The breakdown is the town increased from six dollars and thirteen cents to six dollars and thirty-nine cents, or up twenty-six cents. The local school went from seventeen oh eight to nineteen twenty-three, or up to two dollars and fifteen cents. The state school went from two dollars and thirty-nine cents to two dollars and forty-six cents, or up eight cents. And the county went from one dollar and thirteen cents to one dollar and sixteen cents, or three cents. In comparison to the previous year, the town portion tax rate increased by four percent. The combined school and state education rates increased by eleven point four percent, and the county portion increased by two point six percent. As everybody is aware, that the increase is due for the first interest and principal payment on the bonds issued for the renovations of the junior, senior high school and elementary school. In the previous year, we only paid the interest payments. It's always the second year of the bond that we pay both. The town clerk, tax collector, has issued the bills, and they were-- tax bills will be due on December sixth, two thousand eighteen. To go along with this, the assessors have completed the sales ratio survey as required by DRA for the two thousand seventeen tax year. The sales price ratio is eighty point eight percent for the tax year two thousand eighteen. Yes, it's different numbers. It's the way the state sets it up. Our ratio is at seventy-four percent. We actually should be between ninety and one hundred and ten percent, so we are very off on our valuation at this point. But to go along with that, as many of you may have read, we have begun the process of a statistical update, or commonly known as the revaluation. Municipal Resources, Inc., is part of our contract with assessing, who will be conducting the revaluation. There we go in door-to-door, asking, inspecting interior properties to make sure the values are up to date over the next few months. We will have a new assessment by September, a new evaluation, so it should be closer to a hundred percent. Does that mean that everybody's property values are going to go up twenty-five percent? No, it's usually a third, a third, and a third. A third go down, a third stay the same, a third go up. However, with the market that we've been through, it may be a little off from that one. Those who were here in two thousand thirteen, when we did the last one, we actually saw our valuation was a hundred and ten percent because of the bubble bursting from the property values. So we are going to be going through that process again. Property owners are encouraged to let the inspectors in their properties, just to make sure we have the right information. If not, we have to do the value of the property by guessing, or by what was on there before, or by permits that were issued. So we encourage everybody to let the individuals in. And if you have any security questions, you're always free to call the police or my office, and we'll have information on who the people are out there. Also, when valuation-- value's going to be set next summer, they have the right to have what we call an informal hearing, to meet with the assessors before the formal valuation is set, and review everything, all the information, and make sure everything's correct. So it's going to be a long process, and counselors, you'll be hearing about it a lot, just to get yourselves ready. It's usually one of the more controversial things that we have to do, but by state law, the Constitution, we must do a revale every five years, and just to make sure market value for everybody is fair and everyone's assessed fairly.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Can you talk at all about the process and how that looks for homeowners? Do they get a letter first?
Yes.
Or does somebody just knock on the door?
You may just get a letter. I mean, you may have somebody just knocking on the door, but they will have identification. If you're not available, they will provide you with a letter saying, you know, "We tried to meet with you. Please call us at your convenience, set up an appointment," and then they'll come back to meet with them. And again, I just want to make sure everybody understands that if anybody has any questions about somebody not saying they're an assessor for the town, please call the police department or call the town offices, and we'll verify the individuals that are out there.
Thank you.
Along as well, can we have Mr. Miller, the content, do you expect, and what percentage of proportion of homeowners can be, are going to be? Will they do everybody that way?
Everybody.
So everybody? Because that hasn't, that didn't happen five years ago, did it?
It's a, they do a quarter, a quarter, a quarter. They try to get in, and if they can't, they're going to go back and pick, they're going to try to get back in now, so.
So not everybody will?
Right. At some point, they're going to try to get in, get with everybody, but not, right, I'm sorry, I misstated. You're right.
Yeah. So it's a quarter each, each five year period?
And now what they'll do is they'll try to get in some to make sure everything's statistically. It's not a complete revaluation like they used to do, where that, you'd have like ten people working for the company come out and just--
Every single house would be.
Would be doing it in one year.
Yeah. Right. I didn't think that would be so.
Just to let you know, we received one proposal for Economic Development Services. The planner and I are currently reviewing it, and we'll have a recommendation at the next meeting. The NHMA conference is next week, the fourteenth and fifteenth of November. If any counselors are interested in attending, please let me know tomorrow. We've outlined a register for the early registration fees. I'm assuming that the Town Council would not want to meet on Wednesday, November twenty-first, that's seven, with the holiday being the next day. So we're not scheduling any meetings for that day, so the next meeting will be in December. And that is all I have. I was supposed to have a speaker here, but he is not here at this time, so we will just move on.
Alrighty, are there committee reports, or any comments on the town administrator's report before we move on? Committee reports. The DAM committee met. I'll start with that one then, I might be the only one, but DAM committee met, let me just say, that was, when was it? Late October. And the basic thing was, we had a meeting where some of the abutters were there, we had conversations with Fish and Game, and not much has changed in terms of what the, what we're moving towards. It was basically to, we had to, a lot of the conversation was making sure you would get numbers to go, and when do you have to have them by?
I've received the number today.
You did get the number today?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was going to bring it up during the budget discussion.
Okay, well, I'll let that go off to there, but that was the main, go ahead.
What was shared about Fish and Game?
Well, Fish and Game owns the land on the fish ladder side, so at this point, it's really getting down to them. It's technical details, making sure their access to the fish ladder is good. They were offered a choice between a ramp and stairs to get there, to get, to get the fish up and into the parking area. They're, you know, they're always going to be very interested in vehicle access to the fish ladder. They were, in general, I'd say for now, neither, neither Fish and Game, who owns the land, or the other people that has a lot right away, that are in the Durham Book Exchange, were big fans of any kind of pocket park there. And there's, you know, we don't have a lot of leverage there, so, you know, that, and it's a small land area anyways, but so the major, the project moving forward without any planning on that, and that, the fact that it's not a park means that Fish and Game also wants it to be, they're not a fan of putting a fence there, you know, in the area of the, of where the fish ladder is. The fence that we currently have back by the roadway, that's all, you know, the chain link fence, that will have to be done, redone. And so it will be, and it'll end up being an attractive area, but there were concerns, security concerns, and they already have kids that get on, climb around on the ladder and stuff like that, so. I mean, there's nothing about the design of the project that would, that would prevent that from being revisited later, I don't think, so that's just, it becomes a question for negotiation at some later time. But in all other ways, replacing other gates and everything else, that was, it's pretty much as is. The other major area of conversation was the utility building, which at one time was sort of pictured as being mostly above ground, is essentially, and this is, this is on the Bryant Rock side, and in that area, that, that's, they've done drillings. There was some confusion about exactly where, where bedrock was. On a previous chart that was given to GZA, there was two measurements that had been kind of swapped, but the good news is, they can essentially almost completely bury that utility building, so for residents in that area, and for the town as a whole, it will, it will increase the attractiveness of that area not having a utility.
Is the pocket park above that?
That's, that's the existing parking lot and turnaround area, so. So that's it. The number was kind of as expected, so we'll get more detail.
A little higher than I expected.
Oh. Okay. Sure.
All right. We, the Wonderites, the committee last match on the fourth, yeah, twenty-fourth of October, so it was our second public hearing. We heard from Steve and Attorney Radigan talking about, you know, opposing the adoption of an RBO. We have a tentative date set for our next meeting, which should be our final meeting. We'll come to our conclusion, and we will present a write-up to the Town Council explaining the process that we went through and our final recommendation pursuing an RBO. So right now, it's December twelfth, but it's still tentative, just based on work schedules. We're trying to get it completed before 2019.
Anybody else? Okay. Move on to Resolution twenty eighteen nineteen dash twelve, a water truck number thirty-seven replacement, and I'd accept a motion, please, to approve that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty eighteen twenty nineteen dash twelve.
Second.
Thanks for having me tonight. Number thirty-seven doesn't mean the water truck has thirty-seven trucks. Really has, only has it two equivalent trucks. So just to go over a little bit of history, as everyone knows, we actually put money away in the CIP fund to replace trucks every twelve years. Just because we put money in for every twelve years doesn't mean we replace it every twelve years. We try and hold the truck as long as we can. Truck thirty-seven, we have had for thirteen years. We have sent it to Auto Excellence this year to get inspection, and Auto Excellence has gone through it, and they actually have recommended that we replace it because of rust and how it looks underneath, to actually bring it roadworthy. They have an estimate of forty-three eighty. Looking at it, as the same way I looked on the back truck, some of you were here when I did the back truck, we actually rehabbed it rather than purchasing a new one. This one, however, I went to an auto body shop to see what it would truly entail to put a new, not a new, but a truck body on the back of it, replace it. There's not a lot out there. We found one that was used in Connecticut, and it was thirty-five hundred dollars with some dent in it, which means we would have had to paint it after that as well, get it here, take the old one off, get the new one on. There's a lot more work than actually I think the estimate is here. I actually think this estimate is low. So at this point, we have to look at, this year, we may put six thousand dollars into this truck, you know, what is it next year? Are we at this point with this truck where we replace it because of the age, the miles, and the foreseen repairs that are actually going to have to go into it? There is thirty-one thousand, two sixty in the CIP to replace this truck. We went for the state bid. We looked at a one-fifty and a two-fifty. I'm recommending that we purchase the one-fifty, and the reason for that, this truck puts a lot of miles on because it reads water meters, it does a lot of sampling, does a lot of moving around, and I don't think we need the heavy-duty truck. We do need it to move barrels and move some stuff, but I'm really looking at the gas mileage.
Any questions? The only, the only question I had really, and it's not a, I'm convinced that you've done all your homework, the truck's the right thing. I was just kind of curious, when I, when I, you know, the language about how much money was in the capital reserve fund, I looked at that, and there's, there's one capital reserve fund for, for your, all your vehicles, right?
Yes, but we put money aside for each one every year based on the cost of it, so for that truck, when I track how much is there, that's what's there for that truck.
Right.
Yet we have that large amount.
It's a, it's a, it's a unitary capital reserve fund, but you allocate within that on your, you're not confined by that, right?
No, I'm not confined by that, but I like to keep track of what's going in for each vehicle.
I think you do it very well. There was not any, no criticism or anything else there. I just, having just gone through the CIP process and the budget process, I was trying to make sure I understood, because of the, the precision of having that much money in a capital reserve fund, I was like, huh. So I went back and looked.
I track each one.
See how it's laid out there? I think, I think that's well done. So with that? Sure.
Sean, has there been any thought, have you given any thought, as we are looking at replacing some of our vehicles to, like, alternative energy vehicles?
I haven't, no. I think the town has looked in the past on alternative vehicles, but there hasn't been anything that's come up to--
For a vehicle, this kind of a vehicle?
Yes.
There's not a lot of, I mean, at some point, I think, I'm a personal advocate, hybrid vehicles are working very well in traffic, but I'm not sure how it, there's not much of an upcharge for them. So when you're looking for mileage, someday in the future, that may be a good thing. I don't think we're there yet, though.
I haven't seen it.
Yeah, yeah, so. Okey-dokey. Please call the roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Bowden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, I accept a motion to approve Resolution twenty eighteen nineteen dash thirteen.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty eighteen twenty nineteen dash thirteen.
Second.
And this is for the McIntosh and Tuckerwell Treatment Project?
Yes. As I presented, and you've actually seen in the last couple of months, presented about the CIP capital improvements for the water system. This is one of the items, this actually would bring treatment to the, and make McIntosh a standalone well, and pave the way for bringing in Tucker as an additional. We have done the build-out study that says we need more water. This project will help solve that issue. One thing on how we did this, we actually do the same process that we did for the wastewater treatment facility upgrade, for the selection of the engineer, and for the McIntosh well blending facility. The reason we followed the RFQ process, not the RFP process, is because if we follow the RFP process, it limits us on getting funds for the SRF program and a couple of other programs, and we don't want to limit how we get our funding. This is a piece of the twelve-point, four-million-dollar loan that we're trying to do a lot of water improvements with, so we followed the same process as the wastewater treatment plant and the blending facility, and that's an RFQ process, request for qualifications. How that is done is we created a scope, we sent it out to thirty engineering firms, which are on the New Hampshire Department Environmental Services list of approved engineers, and we want to make sure they're approved engineers through them, because we want to make sure that we're eligible for the funds through the SRF program and rural development. Through that process, we sent it to thirty firms, we actually received three proposals back on qualifications-based, and what they, these three firms that came in, it was Weston Sampson, Wright Pierce, Hazen and Sawyer, they came in and presented on what they thought, how this project should be done, what we should be looking for, how we should be doing it, because it's not just a, you know, build a car, or build a, or build whatever you're going to build. There's a lot of components to this. It's not a direct science. So these three firms, we had come in and present to us. On that committee was the water operator, the systems technician, the town minister, and myself. So we had three technical people sitting right there, listening to how they were going to do this project. After we had their presentations, we scored them, ranked them, in order. The choice that we thought was best on the scoring for the town was Wright Pierce. How it works is then we go to Wright Pierce on this process, and we work out a scope of work. That's what the scope of what you see in your package is. From that, we come up with a scope and fee. The important thing when you look at the scope and fee, the, it's time and materials, and not to exceed. So if we, time and materials is less, we don't spend all that money. If we are going through the project and we don't finish it, and we run out of money in that, Wright Pierce continues to work and gets the project done. This actually happened in the wastewater treatment plant. We actually ran out of money, and they actually continued on and completed the project. The reason the funding agencies want you to do it this way is because a lot of what was happening in the past was projects weren't getting completed because engineering firms were playing the system and lowballing it, what they were doing, and then they'd come back with change order, with change order. So what I do with this scope now, if you agree to go forward with it, Wright Pierce, which it's pretty, there's a lot to do, is pilot testing on the McIntosh well, there's pilot testing on the Tucker well. There's also the application for rural development, which we're trying to get funding from, which that doesn't just include this project, that also includes the South Main Street project and the Bay Road project. So after, if you do approve it, I actually take that contract and send it to DES for their review to make sure it's okay, and then we move forward with it once they get approval, because they compare it to other contracts to make sure we're in the right amount. I'm very confident that we have a good contract here, good amount. I'm going to work as hard as I can, like always, to try and keep the dollars down so we don't spend it all, but we really need to go in this direction so that we can get the most funding from the funding agencies, because if we don't do it this way, we're not eligible.
Questions? I have just a couple.
Yep.
One is, so, and I, just on a quick glance, when I look at it, and it says the, this is on the document from Wright Pierce, it says the total cost was, the one that's bolded that jumps out of all the numbers on there, total proposed cost says three ninety-one.
Yes.
But, which is different than five thirty-two.
Yes, well, if you look at it, that's what Wright Pierce is doing. They have some subcontractors which are doing the site survey, which would be a survey firm. They have some pilot testing.
So if five thirty-two is a summation of all the numbers?
Of all the numbers, yes.
Below that, okay.
Because we have to rent a pump to put in Tucker well to pump it so we can start through the pilot. There's a lot of pieces to this, it's a lot of moving parts.
No, I get that. And so I guess that's the way the process works. I see why the process is done that way, you explained it well. Kind of, you wonder at the end, you know, once somebody is-- It's picked as the contractor that you're going to work with, the supplier, the engineering firm. You know, it's kind of on you to make sure you think they're, they're also giving you a good, a good quote.
Now, if you don't feel like they're giving you a good quote, you can say something and then move to the second person.
Okay.
So you have that right.
Yeah.
But I feel comparing this to some other things we've done were in the right ballpark.
Well, I think your experience is invaluable in that situation, so. Anybody else have a question?
So I understand the process.
Yeah.
I think, and, you know, the RFQ process in general, and I know that we have experience with Wright Pierce, and we certainly have experience with you, Sean.
Yeah.
And I have a lot of faith in your judgment. What I'm concerned about is that we don't have any backup data on, I mean, I know it's not, it's not like the traditional three bids kind of thing. But we don't have any information about the other two proposals, even just like an executive summary, kind of, you know, like--
Yeah, I guess--
Can you give us some information about the other two and how they're compared?
Really, I think the biggest thing on how that stuck, that they did not do, they didn't do a very good job on their approach, on what we felt was going to be the approach on how to attack the problem of, of the treatment. So I would say that Hazen and Sawyer was very good about the treatment, but they were not very good at the funding. And the funding's very important, and where Wright Pierce stuck out, they were very good at the treatment, but they'd also done the funding act for, on a same kind of project for rural development with Plymouth, which was, so if I had to give you a total summary, there was holes in Hazen and Sawyer's presentation in their qualifications, and there were some holes in Weston and Sampson. So if I had to tell you the ranking, it was Wright Pierce, Hazen and Sawyer, Weston and Sampson. And don't get me wrong, they are very good firms, and, but when you actually looked at it at the end of the day, and maybe Steve can offer some opinion on this, because he was part of the process, but Wright Pierce and their team seemed to have every piece of the puzzle, if I can put it that way.
Yeah, it was like, when we had to do the three firms, the committee--
Yeah, it was like, when we had to the three firms, the committee felt that Wright Pierce had the most talent, and just really was going to fit for this project. And to be honest, it's a little odd because one of the other firms worked on the McIntosh well project, but we just thought Wright Pierce had a better fit for this one.
And I think one of my best questions to Wright Pierce is, I see, the wastewater treatment plant was such a success. How are you going to make sure that this project is equally a success? Which kind of caught him by surprise a little bit. But they answered it very well, and they said they were going to pay attention to the details, and they were going to be, you know, give us great customer service, and they were going to listen to what we needed.
So all three firms presented?
Yes.
Was this the only document that was created, I guess, because you liked Wright Pierce the best, or were the other two prepared documents that are similar?
They did not prepare, because this is what the scope that we negotiated with Wright Pierce. We sat down and said, what do we need? They sent me a scope. I said, put some lines through it, no, sent it back, and then they'd sent it. So this was a combination of things going back and forth.
Okay. We're presented with the qualifications, which is the book of oath.
Right. Right. And I certainly don't want that.
In the future, I can try and do a summary of the other firms.
Yeah. I think where we're talking about such, it's a lot of money.
Oh, yes.
And where we're talking about that, just in the interest of the town, and for our own background, it would be helpful to have that, for sure.
Please call the roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Bowden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
We would, I would accept a motion at this time to appoint Melissa Sharples to the Conservation Commission, please.
I'll make a motion to appoint Melissa Sharples to the Conservation Commission.
Second.
Okay. Are there any comments on her application or anything else?
Very detailed, very thorough, I think. Be a great fit on the commission.
Okay.
Where is the Conservation Commission at with membership?
I'll say it's fluid right now, with some potential changes. So this position would, on paper, be an alternate, but I think it might be, might actually need to be a full.
Whether she wants to or not.
Yes, exactly.
Thanks.
Does she know that?
Well, I think it was just posted as being, I think the full-time positions were posted. So I think the last we got were for full-time, and I, the last one took the full-time spot. We didn't necessarily need a second, but I think we are going to. So I think we kind of just matched up with the advertisement for what we actually need, so.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Bowden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay. And I want to now read Resolution 2018-19-14. In the first reading, this is selling surplus town property, 50 Exeter Road. Whereas the town of Newmarket has determined to have no municipal, the town of Newmarket has determined to have no municipal value and is considered surplus. That sentence reads strange to me.
For 50 Exeter Road.
Yeah. For 50 Exeter Road land, tax map 12, lot 13, and whereas Cheney Property Management Corporation has offered to purchase the land for an amount not to exceed $28,100. Now therefore be it resolved by the town of Newmarket Town Council that the town council authorizes the town administrator to sell this surplus town property to Cheney Property Management Corporation for an amount no less than $28,100. Okay. And the next resolution in the first reading is Resolution 2018-19-15, Approval of the Fiscal 2020 Budget. And we're going to be, I'll read it first, and then we'll also need a motion to suspend the rules for the budget, so. The town administrator submitted his, where, excuse me, whereas the town administrator submitted his budget for the next fiscal year to the town council on October 15, 2018, and whereas the town council, after viewing, reviewing the proposed budget and making various changes, desires to forward the municipal budget committee a proposed budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020. Now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the annual budget for the new, town of Newmarket for fiscal year 2020, submitted to the town council by the town administrator, is amended and recommends to the municipal budget committee for its review the following appropriations. General funds, $7,836,346. Special funds, $1,201,083. Enterprise, parentheses, water and sewer, and parentheses, funds, $3,156,942. Total being $9,107,827. And there is a Scrivener's error on that, so we'll, I guess we'll have to change. And I'll have to amend it, because the true total of those is $12,194,371. And that's that. So we start with, I would accept a motion to suspend the rules to begin with.
So moved.
Second.
Could we, if nobody has a comment, we'll just have that vote, please.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Bowden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Do you want to explain why we have to suspend the rules? I mean, I know.
Because by charter, you need to submit a budget to the municipal budget committee by November 15. The town council will not be meeting until after November 15.
Thank you. I think it's helpful for them.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chair, I'd ask that the councils amend the resolution for the total to be...
Do we do the, we amend it before we accept a motion to approve? We haven't done.
No, sorry, yes. I'm off.
I don't get to do that very often.
Yeah, I'm off.
Your math wasn't too good this week.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-2019-15.
Second.
And so the last motion I need now, before we vote on the motion, is to, that motion to, that we would correct a Scrivener's error in that motion, and that the total of the three numbers that are already in that should be a total of $12,194,194,371.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so first vote is now on the motion to amend the budget, as we just said. Please call the roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Bowden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero, seven zero.
Okay. And is there any?
I had the results late last night.
So, so is the dam in here?
No, it's not, but I wanted to explain to the council that this is just the operating budget. We are still going to have votes on two proposed bonds. One will be for the water upgrades, which would impact the ratepayers, but not the taxpayers, for about an estimated $12.1 million. We did receive a number from the engineering firm today, late today, on what the cost for the dam upgrades are estimated to be, and that will be $2 million. We were estimating a 1.5. I asked them for not to exceed figure, so we would, what we do is we get permission to issue bonds up to 2 million. If we don't need 2 million, we only issue for what we need, so.
Do you feel like there's quite a bit of contingency in that? Because I didn't feel like they were really changing their estimate a lot, they just don't like that not to exceed.
Right. And that's, that's my take of it. I could get a little more depth with that, but they were, they weren't going to make the deadlines, so.
They were pushed for time, and there were some moving parts on some of that, so. Okey doke.
What will our timeframe be for that?
I'll have it for the meetings in December.
Okay. Will that be for both?
Both.
Okay. And then we have to have public hearings and...
Can you explain the process of how we get the offer, and what, how it makes it to the voters? Will we approve, then budget committee?
The council approves the question on the ballot.
Yep.
Budget committee reviews it. They can recommend or not recommend passage, but it goes on the ballot what the council approves. There's a public hearing held in deliberative session, and it goes to the voters.
So similar to the regular budget processes?
No, because the municipal budget committee can change the budget.
Okay, fair enough.
They can't change the bond.
Sorry, still no.
Yeah, nope, it's fine.
Thank you.
And the budget committee holds the public hearing, not the town council, or is it...
I've got to double check the law on that one with our charter.
So this number just represents what we discussed on October 27.
Correct.
So I've lost track of it already, but that's what we're voting on. Please call the roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Bowden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay. Is there any correspondence to the town council?
None.
And are there closing comments? Anybody?
I'll just add on to the administrators' combination of the town employees during the election, and also commend the citizenry, because we had a very good turnout, I thought. I think it was about 50%, close, somewhere in that ballpark.
Higher than any midterm election that we've had in recent history.
Yeah, so.
Counsel Dumont.
Thanks. I'm also going to parrot that, but I was also, wanted to say that I was really impressed with how well we were able to handle the significant influx of new registrations that we had coming in. There was like 400 and change, which was impressive and blew me away to see that. I'm just glad that we were able to make it a very smooth, easy transition for folks who either it was their first time voting in general, or their first time registering here in Newmarket. So I thought that was really commendable work.
Counsel Bowden.
Yes, wanted to make a point that it is hunting season gun fly cloud right now, and people who are using the trails, towns, conservation areas, be sure to wear orange if you're walking animals. Have orange on your animals as well. Very rare that incidents happen, but it can happen. I don't know if it's something that you can take up with the Conservation Commission, but there's a way to put some type of orange sign at the entrance of the various areas. I'm sorry?
I like the kiosk or the entrance to some of the landlands.
Yeah, just say, hunting season. Careful.
Yeah, bring that up tomorrow, we have a meeting tomorrow, so.
It's a good idea. I've been on the rail trail, and this was last year, and, I mean, heard gunshots that were so close, gunshots and then footsteps. I mean, I could hear the footsteps, so it was, and that was in like the height of deer season. So, I mean, it's definitely close to people who are using the trails, so I think that's really good feedback for the community.
A lot of people have no idea that it's hunting season, they don't hear it, I'm sure.
Won't think much about it, but practice.
Hunters be sure of what you're shooting at.
Sure.
Well, that's rule number two. Thank you.
I just wanted to comment on our budget process, and I probably should have commented on this before we voted, but I don't know how many people watched our deliberations on that Saturday. I'm sure hundreds. But I felt, you know, this is my, I think, fifth year going through the, going through the budget, and it was just a seamless process, and thoughtful questions were asked, and we take it all very seriously. So just for the, you know, again, the hundreds of people watching, our meeting tonight at home, just so that people are aware that it's, you know, we go through line by line, go through all of the items that are in the budget that eventually make up our tax rate. So it's, there's a lot of thought put into it. And, you know, thank you to the town administrator and to the department heads for the work that they, that they do prior to it getting to us.
I just want to add to that, that just because it was a quick vote tonight doesn't mean there was a lot of, lot of work done beforehand to get to this point. I just wanted to make that statement.
Yeah, exactly. That's, thank you.
Yeah, I'll add a thanks, thank you too, to the CIP committee and to the budget committee that will, provided us input that, you know, we've worked as a council to, to try to better integrate, and the town administrators, well, to better integrate the CIP recommendations and understand them as we look at some of the big-ticket items of adding to capital reserve funds, and now head over to the budget committee for their review. So it's a long process, but an important one.
Feel free to join us at any of those meetings.
Okay. Well, with that, I think we can call it, the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you. [inaudible]. 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 [inaudible].